Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. For the record, apparently that in the corner is a bike wreck.
I can tell. Do we need a bike?
No, we may stop wiggling the windows and the doors. It's how the last two for number one John Colvin. Welcome. It's a meeting in September. You haven't seen me for a while. Glad to be back, glad that my family's helping. Not so pleased that my dining room table is covered with natural filth, but all part of the team. The city who did a lot of fill-in jobs is on a two-week vacation and is in Spain, where she is a fluent speaker of Spanish, so she's enjoying herself. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Tracy is on the phone, but you also have a new member, so you might take the moment to go around and introduce each other.
I will do that once we call the meeting in order. Thank you, sir. So let's do that, call the meeting in order. At this point, first order of business is roll call.
Alderman Boyd, not present. Alderman Cone, not present. Commissioner Benton, present. Commissioner Boaz?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Reese?
Not present.
Commissioner Addo?
Present.
Commissioner Vine?
Present, just for the first item.
And Commissioner Young, not present. And Chair Stroud.
Present.
I need to roll a quorum.
All right, thank you. With that, before we get to the approval of minutes, as was mentioned, we have a new member on the commission. Why don't we give your thirty-second or one-minute elevator speech? We live and die at thirty seconds like you.
I don't think anyone could hold down a thirty seconds. Hi.
Oh, you know, they don't know if you're doing that. But then you don't die.
Yes, I do know that. Good evening, everyone. I am Karan Addo. I'm with the mayor's office. I am happy to be here. I am replacing Emily, who was replacing Patrick. That's about it. I was very, I mean, I'm excited about this. I was excited that the mayor asked me to do this and I'm glad to be here.
Welcome. Welcome very much. Did somebody join in?
Yeah, it's Alderman Shane Cone.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Colvin. Welcome.
Welcome. We'll be, as I've told you some as we've walked in the hall, it's a light agenda tonight. Some of these items you don't see very often. They're not controversial, some of them where we're just actually showing if we can stay in touch. I will do the first one.
Not yet. Okay, we have approval of minutes first.
You may have the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
I'm so lucky.
I did. Now, back in order.
To beam the two hundred of these, I'd miss two.
See, I already think of minutes. So with that, the minutes of this minute, and if you've had a chance to review them, we will entertain approval for the minutes. It's been moved to second, and with that, then we have a roll call on three.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone.
All right.
Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Upstain.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Addo?
Upstain.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
And Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And you have a motion that passes.
All right, very good.
Five yeses, two extensions, and one dispute. Arguably a suspension.
With that, we'll entertain the first item, and Don will be presenting.
Okay. So, call the order. Hey, we are organized here. We approved the minutes from the last meeting. You know, we're going to do something that you normally see in delegated items or are delegated items tonight. We got sidewalk vacations. We're going to show you just one, I'm going to show you one, the city did most of the work. It's in North St. Louis in Baden, I'm fairly familiar with it. It's not anything that's a major street. It's really an area in the middle of what MSD has been working on. Your resolution is a little bit more complete than our slide deck that we have tonight, but it is in Baden. You can see that that band that cuts across at an angle, that's the railroad tracks. To the south of that is the cemetery. All the green space you see in the center of the triangle block is property that have been bought out by MSD. There's adjacent parks, there's a circle area, and then there's a church to the north that has land. And MSD has also bought out much land in the rest of this area. Tracy Boaz is on the phone, and our team has worked with MSD in the past in this area quite extensively. We've moved on to other neighborhoods. This is there now after having control, and as you can see. It's an odd block with a triangle shaped in the middle. These are the possible, these are the portions of previous lots of ways that are being vacated. So this will all be common ground by MSD, it will be fenced off. There are now, there'll be continuous routes for travel to occur. So it's not a vacation of something that we get quite concerned about that's disrupting the traveled with or disrupting areas where people need by necessity. It's been planned out with that. But we thought we'd just bring you this, one of these, because the MSD has been patient and diligent in the report, in the work. Alderman Boyd was here, we might say they get a little ahead of themselves in some other parts of town, but they've done good work here. So if you've looked at your first revision and have any questions, I'm actually entertaining those. But otherwise, I'm just going to ask to say it's in compliance with the plan and will seek your approval.
Quick question. Have all public utilities been relocated and removed from that tree?
It's a good question, but I don't know the answer directly, but I believe they have.
It seems to be worth what they're doing.
Yeah, it's going to be a retention basin, so I believe they have. I believe it is also somewhat unique that that shape caused this area to be served differently than the regular one.
Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, so are these retention areas, is it safe to assume that they're pretty much going to be there forever?
Yeah, yeah. So the, we'll say the caveat, MSD has, we do a lot of work with MSD now in terms of vacant land. They will have fee simple ownership of this. There's other places where we use their money to do a demolition, and then there's a deed restriction on the land from development. That deed restriction sounds like it's forever, but it can be modified if this development occurs. But these type of things, it's an MSD fee simple, it will be that way forever.
So has the city heard much feedback from citizens in these neighborhoods where these are going in in terms of concerns or issues surrounding these types of installations?
The city has heard feedback on those type of things. The reason I'm smiling is that we've entered the program with them where we create with their money open space that we then redo a design project with the neighborhood as to how the open space would be. And that's a little bit more interactive. In the places, especially when they were first doing their program, and they went in and said, "Your basements are flooding, we'll buy you out," homeowners were eager to get bought out. And then when the physical engineering infrastructure that they were doing was coming into neighborhoods, they then started to get some pushback. The property owner would be happy to sell, but there'd be pushback about the design of their infrastructure. And that's why they have a PR department to go out and out and get involved. We will say that in one of the neighborhoods that we're working with in the green space program, one neighborhood we're working half-Baden where they're doing retention basins, Alderman Boyd's geography, and we're doing our green space, and there's more pushback on, obviously, on the retention basins that there are in the community green space and their work.
Well, the reason I bring that up is whenever I hear anything about these MSD projects, there's always murmuring when they talk about doing these big retention basins in North City, but doing underground tunnel projects in South City. And it seems like there's a disparity there between doing the cheaper thing in North City, and maybe that's just because no one wants their sewer bill to go up anymore, and it's cheaper to not have to do underground things than there's the deal with the land. So it seems that there's an equity issue related to that.
The, I'm not the biggest fan of their retention facilities. There was a meeting in MSD now about seven, eight years ago about one facility when they were talking about, and they had to go get security to get me to behave. And it wasn't security, it was the head of MSD. I mean, about nine. And they're getting better above that. The second part, which is where we're using open space land and with the Department of Natural Resources and other partners doing the design for us, because of that very concern that you had, and it's all part of their concept decree with the EPA, I spent three hours in one afternoon with the Department of Justice talking about what we're doing in our program and its equity aspects and its community input. It was rigorously turned. It is true, therefore, that we're doing that in open space, and in the South City, it's far in the ground.
Yeah. Any, approach the commissioners on phone, Commissioner Colvin, or submission of, if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions currently, thanks.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
So I know that there's been also talks, I've heard a presentation from, I think it was a landscape person at Wash U that said MSD doesn't allow the type of facilities that allow for sitting water to be present or for having naturally sort of filter effect. It has to be these open retention basins as opposed to, there's a difference between retention and detention, and they have to have this fence around it as opposed to more like a park-like setting.
So we're designing the park-like settings, they still tend to have the ones with the fence around them.
Yeah.
Part of that is because of what trash and things enter into them, and we're in a combined sewer overflow, so.
Can I jump in on this a little bit?
Absolutely.
I guess I share that concern that these are being designed as like a minimal cost solution. And it's somewhat disappointing to me that that's been the approach. It's difficult that we don't, you know, because MSD is a separate entity from the local government, we're not kind of collaboratively designing things in parks, for instance, but these are always minimum footprints, so they're always very small. There is no water filtering, so you can't have a usable water body. And we did work extensively with Wash U to have them create some designs that were more innovative and more usable, and we could not get any traction with MSD on those. Just want to check that.
So they did, they did much of this, this murmuring on early times of MS from the EPA. And they did ten small little rain gardens. Tracy and I are trying to say that they get all engineered at times, and my favorite one, when I went on a tour, I had some people from out of town, and we stopped by one in the Hyde Park neighborhood, and it had a little cage, and in the cage was piping, in the cage was copper piping. And I asked what the heck that was, and they said that was the Switzer Watering System for the rain garden. And my point that I had a little conviction about was, if it's a rain garden, why are we having a Switzer system? And the straight answer was, we get back from that test, was it takes watering at the beginning to establish the plant. And somebody else in the tour was from Ohio, and they did a little education that, no, there's other ways to do it. And the way that I wanted it to be done was hire somebody from the neighborhood with the access to hose to come and water during those first two years. So it's been a major educational process with MSD. We bifurcate ourselves a little bit between what Tracy and the Department of Conservation, and we have been successful to do in logic green spaces, and we keep measuring and going to do better on anything that we're engineering.
And I really am just, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, I should say that the comments I was making was as a planning commissioner and as a city of St. Louis resident as opposed to as an official from the Department of Conservation.
Okay, distinction made. What's the impact to the residents with the Switzer address there that lay in their back?
I asked the city about that. There was one that we're concerned about, and I can't remember what her answer was or what the method was that she said that there was no more concern, but there was.
And in this day of excessive flooding, excessive water, has that been mitigated in any manner that this does not have an impact on those homes? Because we're at some point now, water seems to just be coming out of everywhere.
These are the, the topography of Baden, as you know, is kind of interesting. These are natural points where the flooding used to occur, and now they've been enhanced to counter the passing of the flood. And houses removed.
All right.
I'm going to, I'm sorry, I wanted to throw something in there. These are not natural places. Sorry, these are not natural places where flooding used to occur. They're actually where two streams came together. So these were pipes.
Are you riding your bike, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry, I'm walking in the front door.
So I was half-right, there was some foot movement.
Now, that, we're, sorry, I used the word natural. These are not natural areas. These are, these, excuse me, a long time ago, there were natural areas, and part of one of the city's problems is we developed over streams and closed the streams in. And so this was an area where there was water before, and it's not nice to improve among the nature, and then we put houses on top of it.
Right. Hence my, kind of my question in the big hole, the emphasis for the question. So with that, any other, any further questions? Hearing none, we will entertain, the commission has been recommended to approve the vacation of Allen. And we'll entertain any motion that the commission puts forward.
I move to approve, propose, pass, propose. It's been moved, I hear a second. It's been moved to second. Call for a vote, please. Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Nay.
Commissioner Boaz? Commissioner Bradley? Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Addo?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine?
Aye.
And Chair Stroud? Most present, all present, voting.
Aye.
I don't vote, I.
I'm sorry, with one note, one note.
One walk in, one walk out. So you're calling in, right?
Well, I think Randy's leaving, but your quorum is retained.
Yes, our quorum is retained. With that, the next one that you have is brand, historical district landmark designation, the Oscar Waring House, nineteen eighty-eight.
And that's on from several resources, we'll pick it up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we have two landmark designations to discuss tonight. I'll just briefly talk about the process, so in general. So the way city ordinances work is that create landmarks is that a petition is created to extend to the preservation board. Preservation board is obligated to route it to both the Board of Public Service and the Planning Commission. And then those bodies are asked to review it and approve it or not. And if they approve it, then it can go to the planning, the preservation board for approval. And if that gets approved, that preservation board then, it goes to the Board of Alderman to begin the process of review by the Board of Alderman. We have one hundred thirty city landmarks in St. Louis. Some of the buildings are quite grand, and some of them are quite modest. And we have two for consideration this evening. The first is the Oscar Waring House, which is located at, where's the other? Twelve Eleven Tower Grove, thank you. This is a house that is owned by Timothy Greenwald, sitting to my left over here. And let's start by showing you some pictures of what we're looking at. Go to the locator box. The house is located in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. You can see the red rectangle there. It's at the corner of mid-block between Swan and Norfolk facing Tower Grove Avenue, south of Manchester, which is the yellow and street perpendicular to Tower Grove. These are two pictures of the house. In twenty sixteen on the left, before rehabilitation, Timothy Greenwald, and post, or a more current picture on the right, he's done a really wonderful rehabilitation of the building, the house. So that is the front facade. It's really the, the one that has, you know, ninety percent of the architectural character. You can see it has a very well-built cornice at the top, rounded windows, empty with a vestibule, stone steps, and a front yard. One thing you will notice is that you can just see a little bit of this building here. This is probably, I can't say it's the oldest house in the neighborhood, but it's one of the oldest houses in this vicinity. One way we know that is because it is set so much further back from the street than the apartment building immediately to the right. So the ordinance six four, six eight nine that speaks to the landmarking process has two sort of requirements of the planning commission and the Board of Public Service and their reviews. One is whether the proposed designation is in conformity with the comprehensive plan for the city and any applicable neighborhood and development plans. And two, the degree to which the proposed designation advances the physical development of the city. What you see here is a map of the, the street to grand use map for the city. This is in the neighborhood preservation area in yellow. The neighborhood preservation areas in the street to grand use plan largely call for the maintenance and stabilization and improvement of neighborhoods that are sort of our legacy neighborhoods with a lot of, of good amount of historic structures or expand structures that are in rehabilitation or are being very well-maintained already. So the staff recommendation tonight, I will, I will not spare you the suspense. The staff recommendation is to support this nomination because the rehabilitation of this building is very much within the spirit and letter of the neighborhood preservation area designation. So here, so here's some context pictures. So the building itself, apologize, it's fixed, the building is actually over just immediately to the left of this apartment building. This is the apartment building that was set in front of the structure when we looked at the primary facade a few moments ago. This is looking to the south. These are habitat houses. This is looking due east, or recall, this building is mid-block, so we're actually looking at the side of one of the buildings that faces Swan Avenue on the east side of Tower Grove. So the building on the left is the rear of that apartment building that's set in front of the Waring House. So this is the building, the first building facing Swan west of Tower Grove Avenue. Couple of comments, as I mentioned before, the citizen conformity with the city strategic land use plan. There is no adopted neighborhood plan for this area. The staff recommends approval, and I did want to just briefly have one other thing to say about this, and then I can take questions, or if there are questions from Mr. Greenwald. The, the reason this is, I still want to talk about the reason why this is in the, the, the staff eligible for landmarking in the city. Under our landmark criteria, criteria A is that a building has significant character or value that carries developmental or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation. And the primary reason why this building is eligible, in our opinion, and should be made a city landmark, is its relationship to Oscar and Mary Waring. Oscar Waring was the first African-American principal of Sumner High School in the city of St. Louis. His wife Mary was also a teacher. Mr. Waring was a very highly educated gentleman. He spoke seven languages. He graduated with O'Gallan College in Ohio. He was the principal of Sumner at two locations, thirteen Twenty-Nine North Eleventh Street and Fifteenth and Walnut, both of which were demolished. When his tenure ended as the principal of the high school, the current Sumner High School in the Bill neighborhood was under construction. Couple of interesting facts. The nineteen hundred census records indicated that the Warens were the only African-Americans folks living in this part of the city, or in this vicinity of the few blocks they were in. And in kind of an oddity, in the nineteen ten census, they were listed as white, actually. But clearly, records indicate that they self-identified as African-American and were considered African-Americans. So I think this is a very worthy building for designation. I thank Timothy Greenwald for his efforts in rehabilitating the structure and doing a fine job with it. And I also wanted to just give a quick shout-out to Andrew Wile from Landmark Association, who through his own research had really identified to large measures that this was Oscar Waring's house, and he approached our office and Timothy Greenwald about the idea he saw in landmarking it, which I couldn't agree with more.
With that, I will entertain questions from the board. Commissioner Boyd is here. I'll start with Commissioner Colvin, if he's on the phone, if there's any. Hearing none, Commissioner Bradley?
Just a quick comment. Yesterday, September third, meeting of the Board of Public Service, we approved designating the Oscar Waring House at twelve Eleven Tower Grove as a city landmark.
Commissioner Peoples?
No questions.
What you going to do?
No questions.
Commissioner?
Did you say when you thought this building was constructed?
It's a little unclear as to when the building was constructed. I would say it was probably constructed in the late eighteen seventies. It's not clear that Mr. Waring was still, but it is clear that as of about eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-one, eighteen eighty-two, he was residing in a home with his wife.
Two cats and one dog. I do have a question of, help me understand them. There's always pros and cons to everything. Yet what's the pro and the con to having a home, a residential home designated?
Well, the pro is largely ceremonial, quite honestly. It does give recognition, as I said, there are only one hundred thirty city landmarks in the city of St. Louis that are individual structures. When we think about how many thousands of structures there are in the city, it's a pretty high honor, because the vast majority of these structures would in no way be eligible to be a city landmark. The con, if you want to see it that way, is that it does come with restrictions. This building is already in a national registered district. I should have pointed that out already, Forest Park Southeast National Registered District. Additionally, it is in a preservation review district, so there were already restrictions on demolition of the building. But now that it's. But now that it's a city landmark, the chances of someone getting demolition permits for this building at any point in the future seem very low, uh, after some kind of catastrophic event. The other, uh, aspect of this that does have regulations is it does come with design standards that are not as similar to the design standards we have for a building like this for what's found in our local historic districts. So, any exterior alteration will require a permit, uh, and will have to comply with historic standards. Currently, in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood, considered not a local city historic, but there are no such restrictions such as that on really any building, uh, with, and, and the, even though it's in a form-based district, a form-based district only covers new buildings and expansion of existing buildings. So, Mr. Greenwald is volunteering, in essence, by agreeing to, uh, have this building landmarked to have it, have those restrictions placed on it. I guess from the, I would also say that the pro is because he's put a lot of work into fixing up the building and now he can know that if he ever sells it to anyone else, they can't do weird things to it, like put drive it or vinyl siding all over it if they decide it's that, was what they wanted to do.
And since I'm already done, you can't stop me from doing anything.
Well, I, I just, for instance, the back, uh, kind of the back addition that was placed on the house, if that is to be redone at any point in time, it does, then has to come back to the, to the historical district.
Right. Any exterior alteration. Now, as I said in my remarks, the primary, um, primarily designed facade of this building, like so many city structures, is the, is the front facade. So, the further back you go in the building, the less it becomes visible, the more latitude. The current owner or future owner will have to make changes and alterations, but it is certainly an extra level of review for permits, uh, when there is construction involved in it.
Are there any interior restrictions?
In this case, there are not. And in the vast majority of our land, well, so many of our landmarks were created before, uh, the landmarks were done, really done first. A lot of them were done in the early 1970s, but a ton of them. And they did not actually pass design standards with those. So, that is one of the perpetual to-dos for the Cultural Resources Office, is to have design standards for the landmarks that were the original ones that never got them. And there's language in ordinance number six-eight-nine, handle an application when there aren't standards, uh, in place, that speaks to the, the sort of spirit of what the historic districts, what the, uh, historic preservation goals of the city are. But, but there's no interior on this particular property.
A lot of the interior was, is really, really rough shape. I actually bought it from Larry Rice and there was termites to the whole inside. So, really the exterior is really the part that remained. It was put back, it was taxed for the job, so all the landmarks were recreated and everything. But it's recreation.
And I always think of that when I was just wanting preservation wise. So, Don, you're chopping at the business speed, so please do.
I am. So, Dan talked about some context of the neighborhood, the neighborhoods of the historic district, uh, those, those type of things. But as we go forward here, is Dan and the petitioner, this was done by petition, the Cultural Resources has helped, they now have comments from you and the Board of Public Service. We'll go back to the preservation board. It will then go and become an ordinance. It will be a standalone ordinance for this building. And then it will have standards as part of that ordinance adopted for this building.
Yes.
And so, regardless of what the context is, this building, the next building you'll see, both will have by ordinance standards that when you go to make a renovation, the permit will be reviewed by Cultural Resources for that. Now, we have some other landmarks that are of a different character, the Jack Buck statue is a city landmark, but, you know, so, standards get to be customized for what's going on.
With that, I would like to say, now you've moved some places before the commission.
I move to approve as a city landmark.
Second? Move to second and second, so we can run all both, please.
Paul Zermin Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Beck?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Addo?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines is, oh, no longer present, and Chair Strader?
Aye.
And motion passes, all present fully now.
Pretty good. And we have another one that's going to Galilee Missionary Baptist Church, 5719.
Go back this slide quickly. So, the rectangle is, uh, the location of the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church, which is Delmar and Pendleton, in Central West End neighborhood. I'll get something out of the way quickly, that I didn't put till the end of last, which is a copy of what was, located a few blocks worth of Central West End neighborhood. Uh, it is also not in the preservation review district, I believe. So, um, this building will now receive protection that it would not otherwise have from demolition in the future. This is a picture of the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. We are looking at the north facade of the church. It's the Richard Soney Romanesque, um, design, and I'll speak a little more in the coming minutes. So, the picture on the lower left is the northern facade. The picture on the upper right is the eastern facade. Uh, the church, uh, is really kind of two structures. There's the sanctuary and then there's the adjoining original, um, building to the left that's kind of a ancillary building, although it's a beautiful ancillary building, to the, uh, to the sanctuary building. If you go to the lower right-hand corner, you can see there's an addition built in the 1980s for a social hall, um, by the church. Here we have again the Cidic Land Use Map. Once again, we're in neighborhood preservation area. Everything I said about the Waring House, I think applies here. This is.
You got the wrong map there, Commissioner? The previous one.
Manchester.
Manchester, okay.
Well, I apologize for that. The, uh, huh, boy, good. So, uh, take my word for it.
That's a little tricky. Everybody has like, everybody has like that down also in their game. At this point, why don't we turn? Attachment A, I think you pay six or six, which is what you're trying to get to.
Is the context the same as what this map is in terms of what's around?
Yeah, but I believe that's true. I'm going to go to the back and we'll work our way forward. Uh, I did confer with Cecilia before we did this and, um, she actually created this by the conforming to the city strategic land use plan. So, and again, there's no adopted plan. So, like the previous one, um, the, those two facts are true. And now I'll go to more context. So, this is, um, located to the, uh, to the north, across the street, across Delmar from the church. This is to the south. This is actually a lot owned by the church across the alley. You can see the back of the church building there on the right. This is looking east across Pendleton at, uh, a home that's kind of typical of this kind of grand houses that are in this area of the city. This is west, so the church is to our left and we're on the south side of Delmar going west. So, those are my pictures. The, um, this is according to Cidic Land Use Plan. There's no adopted neighborhood plan. Got recommendations for approval. But like the other, um, building, I did want to take a moment or two to talk about, just more directly about why the staff had a culture of, of this building is worthy of city landmark status. It is also under criteria A that the building has significant character or value as part of the developmental or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation. Um, really, this church is given for two, has two aspects of that. One is the design, the Richard Soney Romanesque design, um, actually, I'll put back to the first slide. Slide is here. So, what characterizes Richard Soney Romanesque buildings? They tend to be very massive. They tend to be, um, often made of stone. They, uh, a lot of you feel like they kind of almost have a medieval kind of castle-like design to them. It's Romanesque because of the numerous arches you see around the windows and doorways. And it's Richard Soney because Richard Soney architecture is named after an architect from Boston in the 19th century named Henry "Hobson" Richardson, who was a really, almost in some ways, the first signature architect in the United States. He designed three buildings in St. Louis, one of which still stands in the city of Grand Center. And this is a really excellent example of his architectural style, but this will be architecture. Right. John G. Cairn is the architect of this particular example of Richard Soney Romanesque architecture. This is a very different building. But the other reason why this is very significant is because of its, um, association with the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Caldwell is here tonight, um, to, um, to talk about the congregation in the church, if folks have questions for him. Um, the building, uh, was built in 1891, 92. There were a few congregations that owned it until 1947, when it was acquired by the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. The Galilee congregation is much older than that, however, and, uh, created much more in 1947. It was actually founded in 1898. Founded by, and I love this name, the Evangelist Sin-Killing Griffin, and two other reverends, Reverends Nicol and Nicholas Nicol, and Nicholas and Williams. It has six reverends, six, um, church leaders in that time, which is really impressive. It's very active in the community, including the Boy Scouts and, um, and, um, Operation Brightside was instituted by, um, uh, previous reverends at the church. And, um, if I allow this to add this, uh, what we're landmarking is the, the building you see, uh, on the lower left and the upper right. The, the social hall is not part of the designation. Uh, I think that's important, um, for one reason, it's only built in 1985, a social hall, so it probably doesn't even warrant historic status because it's not 50 years old, which is sort of the gold standard for putting things into landmark status. But also, the church may want to make alterations or changes to that social hall, and I don't think we want to put them in a position of having to jump through a lot of hoops to do that when that building, that really is for a core of the church. I do want to speak to one more aspect of this, and that is, unlike the Waring House, this building actually has landmark standards to the interior and the exterior. We base this nomination on the Eastern Star Missionary Baptist Church, which was made a city landmark within recent years. And that church also has interior requirements. And honestly, I don't have interior pictures to show you all tonight, but the interior is just absolutely fabulous piece of interior architecture. I was very happy when Reverend Caldwell and the congregation were willing to landmark the interior. Uh, that certainly was something that was an absolute requirement to become a city landmark. And so, I would say that I think the building is definitely worthy of designation and has the plan missing.
Dr. Caldwell, would you like to speak to us?
Now, unless you all have some questions, uh, if they're a little down. I would like to say that we are sort of a historical, uh, national Baptist, uh, and we are 122 years old this year.
So, your motivation for wanting it designated is in recognition of that history, recognition of being staying in, in?
Exactly, exactly, exactly. And, um, we come to learn that, uh, maybe a couple of blocks over, uh, there is a couple of other landmark designations, uh, Afro-Americans, historical, so it blends in very well to nature.
And one of the things I want to come up with on Dan is, these are, these are coming to us by petition. So, the owners of these properties are saying, want to raise their hand, say, we believe it's historic, we believe it's a value that gets this designation by the city. Uh, but they're coming forward with that. They know there will be these standards and restrictions that they drafted with Dan's staff help. And in this case, I think Bethany helped in particular with the, with the authorship of the, of the petition, one of Dan's staff members. Uh, so, uh, it's all in their hearts to say that, yeah, we're going to have some restrictions on the inside of this one.
Well, it's protected for the congregation also, so that nobody comes in and does other things if they're winning. Uh, just to be sure, I want to, the three buildings, it only covers the two of them, the, not the expansion hall, but the two, the church and the component building behind.
Exactly, to those. Because essentially what you see in the upper, uh, right-hand photograph.
With that, any questions from commissioners? Are you done? I'll entertain the motion.
Yesterday, um, again, at the Board of Public Service, we approved, uh, Galilee Missionary Baptist Church, 2300 landmark for Forest Park Landmark.
So, recognize. With that, I'll entertain the motion if you want that to be twisted. Good move. Second? The second is?
Prejudice will call for previous role, hearing objections.
Hearing not approved, but previous role. Thank you all very much. That point goes back to the, to the commission and, which is the best. Both of you.
Thank you.
And then we'll go on to the Board of Alderman. There'll be a public hearing of the Board of Alderman and more testimonies. Mr. Chairman, that's your last action item of the night. Uh, there are some delegated items. But I do want to just take a deep moment to show the town, um...
Did we have a call for closed meeting?
For, for a closed meeting? No. Okay. But I just, um, I want to say a document that we've just produced, um, we are obligated to do by ordinance, it takes a total amount of staff work, uh, it is the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act findings for the city of St. Louis, uh, now made in graphic forms of evaluating, um, the applications from banks in St. Louis, uh, to be depository of city funds, meaning it's the treasurer seeks these applications and then will just determines about putting city money in these, these banks. We do this report by ordinance that really does and talks about these particular banks, uh, records in terms of making mortgages, making home repair loans, uh, those type of things. It's quite the expensive effort. That's just out on the table. And then, uh, in a last, uh, final document is Cecilia, when others have been, we are, we, as you, what we call, we've had a budget increase for the planning and urban design agency to take on a neighborhood planning program, uh, and hire staff to do that. It was from, sort of from zero to 60 all at once, uh, without really the whole programmatic of how we're going to do it. So, we've been doing, uh, great deal of diligence, uh, knowing that our adopted process for neighborhood plans, we used to do them, or we used a contract for them, uh, and then we came up with some standards and some not-for-profits would do them, or we'd have some money. So, this is going to mishmash. We're thankful that the Graboy-Jefferson Plan, which you guys adopted, distinctive Alder Plan, followed our standards to, but it wasn't a full scope of work, uh, uh, to do that. So, we've been, uh, uh, developing a history of what our planning processes henceforth have. We've been doing best practices from around the nation for how to do neighborhood planning, uh, and those each will sort of be a white paper. And then a third is analyzing our, our city and coming up with what might be our strategy for which neighborhoods will be first. Uh, there's a separate funding effort to help some of these neighborhoods, uh, to get their, their organization together before we come and do the plan. Uh, so those three things are in sort of formative stages. And in the next three months, next, the next two, two months, uh, we'll talk about which are going to be the first batch of neighborhood plans we're going to do this year. I, uh...
I have a suggestion.
Say that, Shane.
I said, I have a suggestion for you, Don.
Yep, yep. And part of that gets to be, is there'll be these, the criteria, and that will happen with the, with the priorities for it, because we're going to get to all neighborhoods over a number of years, is going to be one of these, one of the tricky things, but we'll have data. have data that will help fuel that. The thing that gives me great deep breaths to have to do is our hiring and recruitment is through the city personnel system. We have to develop those job descriptions to get the right type of folks to do the things we do. We have consulting money, and it's just an ordeal to do that. So that's, that's taking effort to get that all down through personnel. So we probably, we won't be in the ground for yet, for a few more months. But, sorry.
Well, with that, before we close the meeting, I want to go on record and say, Don, we're glad to have you back. We have been in prayer for you and, and your wife. More her, because she's had you to deal with. I hope we are glad both of you are well. And with that, I will entertain a meeting, a motion to close the meeting. It's been moved. Second, a meeting adjourned.